And the town in response to COVID-19 and guidance from the Board of Health, we will be broadcasting live over local access TV. On Acton TV channel, a stream online at Acton TV YouTube. And audio will be broadcast live on radio at WAEM 94.9 FM. From a computer, you can join us. The webinar is on Zoom, 503-918-785. Or from a telephone dial 646-876-9923. And enter webinar ID 503-918-785. Telephone users may dial nine to request to speak after joining the meeting. Computer and app users may use the raised hand feature to request to speak. So are there any citizens? I don't see a citizen. John?
It looks like there's one person with their hand raised in the audience.
Okay.
Would you like me to bring them in?
Please.
Okay. Oh wait, there's two more.
Hi, Tara from West Acton.
Hi Tara.
Hi, I'd like to get a copy of the presentation posted on DocuShare. So the people that are attending via phone can see the presentation, the Housing Production Plan presentation. Also, I would like to know whether you'll allow people to speak then. And I would, I've heard something about a special session for the Housing Production Plan where people will be able to speak at length. And I think that's a great idea because we weren't allowed to speak at the workshop, the public workshop. So can we get the presentation so that we can follow along? Connect it, post it to DocuShare?
I don't know. John?
I'm looking into it.
It's an attachment to the agenda.
No, the document is, the presentation is not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
But if anybody has access to it, I suppose they could, if I'm the only one looking for it, email it to me. But I think it'd be great if it could be on the DocuShare because that way other people can look.
All right, we'll try.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, yes, there are. Want me to bring in the next caller?
Sure.
Mr. Van Meter?
Okay, I didn't actually know. I don't have a question at this point, but I wanted to just indicate that I'm here and looking forward to the presentation. Thanks.
Welcome aboard. All right.
Oh, and Derek Chin may be here for the same reason. Mr. Chin, you're in the room now. Here's another caller, Ben. Ben, you're on the line? Okay, I got rid of that individual. Okay, we've removed that individual. And I think we should suspend the citizen petition portion.
Good. So let's go with the update.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Derek. I've been trying to get on for the last 10 minutes.
Okay, well, we just started.
All right.
No, the video cam's not working because you have to update your computer.
It sounds like I have to update my computer.
Why don't you just do it through voice now?
Yeah.
You can just use the voice back.
You're fine, Derek. You can just stay like that.
Oh, you can see me now?
No, we don't have to see you. We can hear you.
Okay, fine, because I used this to watch the Finance Committee meeting last week. I think it was Tuesday.
Okay, well, we're glad you're here, but now we're going on to the Town Managers' Report.
Thank you.
So I apologize for that interruption that we just had. We'll figure out a way to make sure that doesn't happen again. But getting back to the updates. We continue to do a lot of different things to try to help the community and the organization manage in this new environment where we're meeting daily as a staff online and trying to identify ways to sort things out. We have a weekly meeting with many members of the community, which happens on Tuesdays. And we're getting, we have a phone call with Lieutenant Governor every week. And Mark is on the call with Mimo every day. And there's a lot of interaction going around. And we're all trying to work together to understand things. As many people saw, the governor announced today that schools will be closed for the rest of the school year. And there'll be some additional information that they're releasing later this week on how that will work for the school systems. And we also expect some additional information about the nonessential business closure that I believe is supposed to go through early May. And we'll hopefully hear soon if there's any changes to that being proposed. There are 45 cases currently confirmed in Acton. That number has held since Saturday through today. You know, as the governor said, a few days doesn't mean a trend. So we don't try not to look too closely at these things, but that's where we are now. We're working to do the municipal monthly. Every month, we do the municipal monthly online. And then quarterly, we put it in the tax bills. But in the quarterly version, we make it only two pages so that it can fit as a tax bill insert. We're going to do a special edition and mail it out to every household for May. And we're going to use the same mailing program that we used to do the Board of Health letter earlier, a few weeks ago. That reached every household and seemed to work pretty well. So we're going to do a four-page municipal monthly and put a lot of great information about COVID resources, general government, public health, community resources, and then cultural and other resources that we have to try to help give people a full picture of what's going on in their mailbox. So we're going to be working on that for May. Hope to get it out next week for the first. We've launched a hotline, a phone number that people can call, a centralized phone system answered and staffed every day, every business day. And we actually have translation services available for a few languages. And we can, we can get access to additional ones if needed. This is a phone number that people can call for general questions about COVID and how it's impacting something that they need to do in town, whether it's a question about an application that they filed or anything related to town business. This is one number that you can call. That's sort of first-line customer service to answer those questions. And it's also a way to get directly to the health staff or the nursing staff as needed. We get some good news from the FCC, which I was surprised to hear about today. Mark told me that last week, his team, Mark and his team, were successful in getting our radio station range increased, which is a pretty big deal. The city of Boston and the town of Acton are the two communities that were able to do this in a recent FCC action. So our range now extends into Boxborough a little bit, and it covers most of Acton, whereas before we had some gaps. So that's great news and great work by Mark and the IT folks. We've started a social media campaign, which at least one of our selectmen has participated in to try to get people excited about the restaurants in Acton and take a selfie outside after you get your takeout to try to promote that our people are using our restaurants and try to create some excitement about that. So we just launched it on Friday. And we're going to do some more work on it this week and hope that people participate. But if you get a takeout from a restaurant, do so safely and following all the standard guidelines for social distancing and CDC recommendations. And also snap a picture and send it. And we'd be happy to help promote our businesses. We'll do the job with John again on Friday morning. We have some guests that we're working on. And if you have any questions, please send them along. That's the general update for today. Thanks.
John, thank you very much. I think you and the staff and everybody involved is just doing a spectacular job. There are so many issues, it's hard to keep track of them all. And you are, and doing an amazing job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Housing Production Plan? Who's going to present that?
Well, that would be Liz and Jennifer. Those are our.
Okay, now I see her.
Hi, I'm Les. I'm the Director of the Regional Housing Services Office. And I'm here with Jennifer Goldson. There, can everyone see everybody?
Yeah, hi, I'm Jen Goldson. Nice to see you all.
And Jennifer is going to put up the presentation that you'll, I think that's what you'll start seeing on your screen. We have sent that to staff to see if they can post that to DocuShare while we're presenting it tonight. And if it's not immediate, it'll be first thing.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't realize that I was supposed to share it. Let me just get it up here. Pardon the view on my.
I think I could do that if you'd rather.
Yeah, no, I just, I got it. I had to just download it from our network here. Okay.
This presenting on Zoom is new for all of us.
Here we go. We can see it.
Great. Okay, good. Yeah, and I apologize, I've been in back-to-back meetings all day. So it's been one of those, you know, Zoom is great, but it also means, you know, I can be scheduled for back-to-back meetings with no travel time. So that's what the day was like today. So Liz, did you, I think you're going to be starting out and then I'll.
Yeah, so I'll start and then I'll just, you know, indicate to move to the next slide. I guess we'll do it that way, right?
Yeah, perfect.
So again, so this, as it says here, this is the presentation to the planning board. So you can see right off the bat where we're flexible with how we're going forward. We thought that that's what was going to be tonight was the planning board. But I think that in, you know, because of the scheduling between the planning board and the Board of Selectmen, this is a joint meeting. But in our process, it was the planning board. So this is right here, just a summary slide of the RHSA. I think that this is known to many people, but like to put that in. Acton is a member of this regional collaboration between the eight towns where Concord is the lead community. And through our office, which is for people, we do a number of things. And one of the things that we are doing right now here today is preparing our portion of the Housing Production Plan. We're doing that in partnership with Jennifer. But so that's just a little update.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
There was a request from Tara, I believe, for a copy of the presentation. Perhaps Jennifer or somebody could send one to her?
Yep, I mentioned, I don't know if Kristen is on. I sent it to Kristen and maybe she can help by sending it to people who are asking for it on a one-on-one basis. Kristen, are you able to do that? I don't really know if we, I'll send directly to Tara right now, Kristen says in the chat.
Thank you.
Just for everybody, it's also, the share slide is very, very readable for everybody. So I should be, I think we should be okay as long as we follow up with posting.
Yeah, and I think some people though, when they're on their phone, might not, it might not be as. But yes, thank you, Ray. So tonight's agenda is to present the draft Housing Production Plan and receive public comment. We posted the plan first for public comment on Thursday. So that was the first time available for any public comment for any group. So there was a, we'll go through that a little bit later, but taking in information from the community and then spending a couple of months putting it together in this comprehensive plan. And I've just laid out here where we see the process and where we've scheduled the process going from here. So we could see that this isn't the last time we're going to be hearing comments. I think there was some, we weren't clear about how comments would be received and what the public meeting schedule was going to be, partly because, you know, things are changing with the Zoom and so on. But this is the schedule that was determined or put together back in the beginning of the project. So starting the public comment period on the 16th, we have this first meeting tonight. And then looking to if this works out for everyone in the community. Ending the public comment period on the 29th. Putting all those pieces together with a new Housing Production Plan for presentation on the 4th for a second meeting. And if we need to extend any of those processes, we have another meeting that we could do up to the 18th of May. And looking to submit to DHCD by May 20th. And the current Housing Production Plan expires on August 20th. And DHCD likes to have, or in their regulations, a 90-day review period.
Well, this. I think we generally ought to hold questions until the end. But let me just ask this upfront. We've had a number of requests to extend the deadline for submitting to DHCD. People are complaining that it hasn't been enough time to review it and they need more time, particularly with the COVID-19 crisis. What are the possibilities for that?
Before we get there, can the planning board please have a roll call vote to open their meeting?
Oh, thank you.
Can the chair call the role or the clerk of the planning board?
Where are you, Derek?
And Ray, why don't you announce yourself?
Okay, this is Ray Jacoby, Planning Board.
And Sam, why don't you announce yourself?
This is Sam Baschwa from the planning board.
As far as I know, I can see everyone, but nobody can see me.
So you have a quorum?
No, we do not.
Okay.
What happened is the, the, the idea of changing the structure of the planning board from seven full members and two associates, to five full members and the one associate was okay at the last meeting, town meeting. But it needs to be ratified at this year's town meeting, which we have not had yet.
Okay. So. Let's continue then. Liz?
Yeah, thank you. So this schedule, you know, if Acton would like a longer public comment period, I think that that can, that can work. It's really up to Acton. DHCD would still have their 90-day period. And they are often doing that quicker than 90 days, but they allow themselves 90 days. And, and what? So the expiration date, I think, stands at August 20th. But as we'll get into a little bit later, the Housing Production Plan was used to provide a safe harbor for Acton. And many people will understand that and that the extending or having the HPP expire and then having the new one come in after that does not jeopardize the safe harbor. So there's no impact to the safe harbor aspect. And I think that as we go forward, if there's more public comment period that's needed, we could hear what that is and then put together a schedule for that.
Yeah, Liz, I have a suggestion on that. I was back and forth with a number of people responding to emails and one telephone call today. And it was clear that, you know, given the circumstances, unprecedented circumstances we're in, and we extend the comment period because you did build in here between the second joint meeting and the third joint meeting, two weeks, we could still keep to the May 20th deadline. If we could extend the comment period to May 4 and have the, what you would call the second joint board meeting on the 11th. So that would give you people a week between May 4 and May 11 to sort out comments and, you know, line them up for us so we could be set to deal with them. And then keep to the third meeting, you know, on the 18th, which hopefully would be the, you know, the final meeting. And I would also suggest, you know, something else, since there were a lot of comments and people wanting to be involved in addition to putting their comments online, to having a virtual meeting and maybe just making it easier on everybody, having it during the day on Saturday, May 2nd. I mean, nobody's going anywhere. And everyone should be available. And that would be, you know, with two days to go on the comment period. But I think in terms of what we're trying to do, because we're in safe harbor, we're going to get to 10%, you know, we really want to, you know, go forward in a very positive way. You know, let's hear from the public in more than just online comments.
Sure, that's, those are good ideas, John. And we'll take those back and flush them out with the schedule. And I'd have, you know, if there's any budget impacts to the project, we'll let you know at that time as well.
Okay.
Just a minute, if you may, that there is, there is another planning board member in the room. They're just not, you just can't see them. So you do have a quorum, just to, just to close the loop on that previous matter.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
John, do you know who that is?
Ann Ping, I just let her.
Ann Ping just joined. Great, thank you. Ann Ping, can you hear us?
Okay, Liz, let's go.
We need Ann Ping to do, answer his roll call so we legally have a quorum.
Great, all right.
Next slide, Jennifer. So talking about what the Housing Production Plan is, it's a, this, this plan is a consistent framework. So that's through DHCD regulations. You know, we talked about, that's the Department of Housing and Community Development. They've offered the safe harbor through the Housing Production Plan. And they provide the regulations of what's to be included, how it's to be conducted. And it is a production plan. So it really is a plan of how to produce housing. So that's part, that's their regulations. So providing local input through significant community engagement, goals and strategies. And some are more aspirational and some are more practical. So you'll see that when you look at the goals and strategies, some are easier and more laid out and some are more strategic. And this regulated process does require adoption by the planning board and the Board of Select. So that's again, part of the regulation.
Let me just interrupt. Ray says that we didn't hear back from Ann Ping on the roll call. Ann Ping? I guess he can't hear us. He should be able to hear us, but I just, I just want to make sure that he's, he's, he did not answer the roll call. We see his name on the screen, but he did not answer the roll call.
Okay.
Can I just cover this? That the Housing Production Plan is a regulated proactive strategy for planning and developing affordable housing? And why to do one, engaging the community in a housing discussion, identifying the housing needs of a community and creating a safe harbor if you demonstrate sufficient progress towards housing production. So it does identify those production goals. So as we've talked about before, and a lot of this is, might be repeat, Acton has a current Housing Production Plan that expires in August. The process for Housing Production Plan is to prepare it, which we've done here, then to have it approved by DHCD. And then to certify a plan when you create the unit, sufficient units under the plan. And Acton did that last July. And it creates this two-year safe harbor through 2021. And then Acton also has, speaking of safe harbor, has future opportunities to reach 10%, the 10% 40B safe harbor. Powder mill would not only reach the 10%, but would also extend the Housing Production Plan certification. And then with the 2020 census, which would impact the housing, Subsized Housing Inventory, SHI, next year, the Mass Ave project and the Main Street project would get Acton to 10%. So that's just a snapshot on the Housing Production, I mean, on the safe harbor. So in terms of the project schedule, so this started back in September, looking at doing the data gathering, which really comes out in the Needs Assessment portion of the document. 20-plus data sources from the census data to American Community Survey, assessors and the building department and the planning department. From there, we went through the community engagement portion. And you can see here, interviews, focus groups. There was a survey, community workshop, and then review and adoption. So that's the part that we're in right now. So the document itself, yes, as people have mentioned, it's a pretty long document. It has an introduction, executive summary, a needs assessment piece with demographics, housing inventory, affordability, development constraints, goals and strategies. And I summarized all 35 pages of the needs assessment on one slide. It's hard to, it's hard to do it justice. It was hard to pick out. And I didn't want to go through all of that in this presentation. Really encourage you to look at the document. But we can see here that population continues to increase. And so that's a, you know, those are, that's 8% over the last two decades. On the, moving to the right, we have housing prices outpacing income. And you can see that where, you know, the housing prices are, have increased 63% versus 51 on the income. On the bottom left, Acton has more rental housing than these comparative towns. And then on the bottom right, that many of the low-income households are cost burden. In fact, 70% of all the low-income households, which we use for under 80% of AMI, are cost burden. And cost burden is the term where you're spending more than 30% of your income on housing. So that's a generally accepted terminology. Banks use that. They might go up to 38%. For example, if you're, you know, looking to be underwritten for a mortgage. But here in housing, they use the term for 30%. And so again, these four charts represent a small sampling of the needs assessment. And I encourage you to look through the rest of the materials there. So I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer, who's going to talk about the goals and strategies.
Yeah, thanks, Liz. Okay, so first, I just want to say that any housing plan, really, whether it's a Housing Production Plan or a housing element of a master plan or really any kind of plan that's dealing with housing needs and housing development, there's always this tug of war between how can you provide the housing options that are needed based on the needs assessment and community preferences as well. At the same time, while you preserve the character of the community. And this is the, at the heart of every planning initiative that we, that we do for communities. And it's this tug of war that really ends up being the, sort of the deciding factor on, did we get the balance right? So the, the plan, the way that we laid out the goals and strategies, we, we looked really carefully at the community feedback that we received through the process and saw this tug of. Community feedback that we um received through the process and saw this tug of war, you know, which is evident in really all communities. Um and the trick is, can we find the right balance? Can we find the balance between? Um your actions to meet your housing needs and your actions to preserve your community. And so what the community, what we'd love to hear from the community in this review process. Is if the plan as it's written strikes that balance in a way that sits right with the community. And ultimately, it will be the planning board and the Board of Select, selectmen that will be voting on the plan, but I know from the, the. Conversations tonight, but also throughout the process, the community's members that we've been working with in the planning. On the planning board and the working group that we've been working with have all been interested all along to. Get extensive community feedback to see if we can strike a good balance in the planning document while meeting. The goals that DHCD sets out for these plans. So with that being said. Um the working group um did think very carefully about how to strike that balance. And you'll see that there are things in here that respond to different voices that we heard. So um just as a reminder, there was the community forum that I suspect many of the people on the phone participated in. There was the community survey, as well as the focus groups that we did early on to get, to kind of get a lay of the land in the process. Um and so just very briefly, um there are. Supporting documents, if you wanna dive into the details of what we heard at each of these. But some kind of general summary of what we heard at each of those engagement points. So what we heard in the cer- in the survey was that um many people felt it was important to. Uh have the ability to age within the community. Um. People felt that the top needs for elderly and disabled residents are home-based services. Accessibility modifications and improvements to existing homes. As well as more accessible housing units in general in the community. We also heard um the desire for more popular options of uh. You know, when, we asked a whole list of types of housing options people would like to see, these are some of the more popular preferences. Senior or age-restricted housing and single-family, accessible units and houses on smaller lots. Um less popular options out of the list that we gave people was luxury apartments or multifamily units of twenty-plus. So those were some of the, the, the um things we heard in the survey. Some of the things we heard from the focus group. Um focus groups early on was that affordability of housing was one of the main issues people brought up. And in particular, the need for more housing options for um young professionals, schoolteachers and local employees in the service industry. And you'll see some of these terms are carried into some of the goals, and I'm sure we'll talk more about that tonight. Um need for opportunities to downsize for seniors who need less space and may be on a fixed income. Um then the main challenges we heard were the need to balance, like I was saying before, this. Balance of growth with conservation and growth with preservation and growth with community character. Um and preservation of historical properties and the, and the rural character, those are some of the. Specific phrases that folks in the focus group um thought were some of the main challenges. And then some of the main opportunities were to work more closely with developers and identify sites. Um that could be appropriate for new housing, which you'll see we've, we've um done in this draft plan is look at sites. And then at the public hur- forum, what we heard were really split opinions. I would say that the split opinions were between building um new housing in um. You know, in areas that some people felt were good opportunities for new housing. And um others really advocating for the purchase and rehab of existing properties over new construction. Um many of these properties maybe are already affordable, naturally affordable, if you will. Not that they're deed restricted, um but that they are set at lower prices because of the nature of the. The development or the condition of the buildings, et cetera. Um and so we, we heard a lot of split opinions about to what extent should this plan focus on. Opportunities for new construction versus opportunities to look at creative reuse. Of existing buildings, maybe even existing apartments that are already um uh on the lower end of the market. We also um heard many participants again reiterating what we heard through some of the other mechanisms, the survey and the focus group. Um with a strong support for providing additional housing options for disabled residents. As well as very and extremely low-income households. Some of the concerns we heard were that new development could bring a loss of open space, changes in the town's rural character. And increasing traffic congestion. And then for those who supported new housing and construction of new housing, the focus was on compact development. Such as cluster housing, which can work well with the preservation of open space. Um as well as multifamily housing in strategic locations. Um and then also concentrating new construction in walkable areas such as village centers, um including Kelly's Corner. So those were some of the, kind of a high level of a summary of what we heard, but. We do have documents that summarize in great detail, including the transcriptions of every. You know, everything that people wrote on all those sticky notes and and whatnot, so. I'd encourage you to dig deep if you are interested in seeing um more information on that. So in terms of the goals, the DHCD and the regulations that we follow to create these plans. Um they require that we include two types of goals in the housing production plan in order for it to be approved by the state. You'll see that the plan um that's drafted for public comment has more than these two goals, but these are the two primary goals that you have to have. One is you need a numerical production goal, which shows that you, or, or. Says that the town aims to achieve incremental production. Now, of course, you can't guarantee you're going to achieve that, and there's nothing in the plan or the regulatory mechanism of this plan that requires you to achieve it. It's a incentive-based plan, so it rewards you with certification, which gets you safe harbor if you're able to achieve. These, these production goals in any given calendar year. Um but the goal has to say that you do aim to achieve the incremental production. And there's specific numbers, and it's just based on math of what your twenty-ten, from the US Census, twenty-ten year-round housing units. Um and then in twenty-twenty, of course, that will change. But right now, your goals are forty-three units for a one-year certification. And eighty-five units for a two-year certification, and you're already in your two-year safe harbor period. Um until, and then the goal states that you'll incrementally attempt to produce that amount of housing, whether it's through new construction. Or reuse of existing um buildings. Um either way, you can get units to count on the subsidized housing inventory through this goal. So I don't want people to be thrown when I use the term production. It's a, it's a term that's used in the plan, um it's the name of the plan, but it doesn't necessarily mean new construction. Um but it's producing units that count on the subsidized housing inventory. The second goal that's required is a housing options goal, and that really talks about types, you know, uh. Diversity of types of housing that are um needed by a, a range of types of. Living situation, age and ability and household um compositions. So the way the regulations uh describe this is through town policies, programs and practices. The town will aim to create a mix of housing that is consistent with local and regional needs. And feasible within the housing market, including rental, ownership and other occupancy arrangements. Um for families, individuals, persons with special needs and the elderly. So those are the two plans, or I'm sorry, the two goals as stated in the requirements. And you'll see when you look at the draft plan that there are actually eight draft goals. One is about production. The second is about a mix of options, so we're, we're hitting the two required goals right on the top here. Then we also have a, a goal, and I'll get into the specifics of these in a minute, but we have a goal about conservation, sustainability. Centers and villages, rehab and reuse, capacity and preservation. So you'll see that there are a number of additional goals here than just what's the minimum that's required um by the statute or by the, uh, the regulations. So I broke the goals out on a couple of different slides here, so goal one, production is that production goal, striving to create a minimum of forty-three. Homes annually that count on the SHI until you get to that ten percent. Goal two is about the mix of options, encouraging a mix of housing options to provide homes for a range of household types, including. Families, seniors, young professionals, individuals with disabilities and lower-income households. Goal three, conservation, combine new residential development with conservation through creation of market rate. And affordable homes that are clustered to preserve open space, natural resources and scenic vistas. Goal three is about sustainability, incentivize new construction that incorporates sustainability standards. Including energy efficiency and compact building footprints. So goals five through eight. Goal five is about centers and villages. Locate new residential multifamily and mixed-use development in and near business centers. And village districts to enhance economic vitality, promote walkable vibrant neighborhoods. And ensure environmental sustainable, environmentally sustainable land use practices. Then we have the rehab and reuse goal. Facilitate rehabilitation or reuse of existing buildings to create deed-restricted. Affordable units that count on the subsidized housing inventory. And then we have a goal number seven about capacity. Reinforce the work of existing local housing organizations with enhanced implementation capacity and expanded regional collaboration. And then the last goal is about preservation of the existing affordable units, so that you don't lose them on the subsidized housing inventory. So moving into requirements for strategies. So in order to achieve those goals, goals are really um general conditions that you're aiming for, but it doesn't tell you how to do it. So strategies are really the roadmap to how do you achieve those conditions? So there are um five requirements in the regulations that we have to follow. In order to have the plan approved by DHCD. So one is we need to identify specific zoning districts or geographic areas. That the town will mod- propose to modify current regulations so that you can create. Um subsidized housing eligible housing units. Um of course, those need to go through the normal process for making any kind of a zoning amendment. Um but we have to say that there are strategies that look at how can you amend zoning. To encourage affordable housing. The second strategy requirement is that we need to identify specific sites. Private sites that the municipality would then encourage housing, either through the rezoning or through comprehensive permits. Number three is looking at what characteristics of proposed residential or mixed-use development would you prefer? And so you might have strategies that talk about cluster development or adaptive reuse of existing buildings. Transit-oriented housing, mixed-use development. Or inclusionary housing, which would require market rate developments to include affordable housing. And so these things are sometimes woven together into the same strategy, but I just want you to understand the categories that we need to. To reach when we're writing these strategies. The fourth is looking at, are there any municipally-owned properties that the municipality will issue requests for proposals on? To develop affordable housing, or more specifically subsidized housing inventory eligible housing. And then the fifth is participation in regional collaborations. So you'll see some of the strategies are about capacity and collaboration in addition to these more specific zoning and. Um and other types of programming. Okay, so the nineteen draft strategies are in three categories. The first category is about local initiatives, programs and monitoring of existing units. So these are things that don't um necessarily require zoning changes. They're using your town staff, your boards and commissions, other organizations, um your local funds. And um policies, or I'm sorry, policies is the next category, but really looking at how can you use your local resources? To create new housing opportunities, and I think that'll become more clear when I talk to you about what those strategies are in that category. The second category is planning policies and zoning, and so. This is probably more straightforward of a, of a heading for most people. Zoning is recent, looking at rezoning or zoning amendments. Uh policies could be, um we have an example of working with the Community Preservation Committee on a policy. Um and then planning is what kind of planning can you do to um to inform potential zoning and policy changes? And then the third category is about capacity, education and coordination, and that's really about, do you have the capacity? Um are people in, well-informed, and do you have the coordination so that these initiatives can actually be implemented? And so those are the three categories of the strategies. Um and so I've clustered them in those categories. You can see in the plan, um when you get a chance to read the whole thing, hopefully. That every strategy has a pretty lengthy narrative, giving examples and really diving in deep to what is meant by each strategy. Then there's also this matrix, which this is just a part of, that shows every strategy and how it could potentially help achieve. One of the eight goals that are in the draft plan. And then there's another matrix that talks about every strategy and who would implement it. Who would help implement it within the community and what timeframe could that be implemented in, and that's the action plan. So I'm gonna end with these, um I think I have three more slides here, so. The local initiatives, programs and monitoring category includes five strategies. One is to do an ongoing and updated inventory of both town-owned and tax-foreclosed properties. Sometimes tax-foreclosed properties come on the books. And they could be appropriate to, for example, reuse an existing building for affordable housing or create an infill. Development um on a tax-foreclosed property, so always keeping an eye out on those. Um and really doing a thorough inventory on an ongoing basis. Two is consider establishing and funding a program with the housing authority. To acquire existing condominiums and apartment buildings so that those units can then be. Deed-restricted and converted into affordable housing. Three, consider establishing a buy-down program which would create homeownership opportunities. And we can describe the mechanics of that if people want in the, in the Q and A, but the idea would be to do a, a type of a homebuyer program. Four would be consider expanding the Acton community housing corporations. They already have a capital improvement fund to help with rehab of existing houses um units. Um and so the idea would be to expand that, and we had some funding source ideas around that. And then five would be research, oh, and I'm sorry, back to number four, that could also specifically target helping. Helping seniors age within their, in their home and doing rehab to help support. Um aging seniors' needs to stay in their home. Number five, research and establish a rental assistance program, and so this could be done either. Under the COVID emergency to help people with housing costs on an emergency basis, or it could be. Potentially a more long-term rental assistance program, but the idea would be to create. A local rental assistance program to help people in need. Um, okay, so the next category is planning policies and zoning, so eight is consider rezoning areas that have. Vacant or underutilized buildings already so that they can either be redeveloped or reused. Nine, strive to amend the zoning bylaws to allow for more conversions. You already allow some level of conversions, but there's a, a date, I think it's nineteen seventy-one bef-. That the building has to date before that in order to be converted. You also require that the homeowner has to occupy one of the units. So looking at, are there ways to amend those conversion provisions to make it a little bit more uh flexible and easier to convert. An existing building to multifamily or even affordable. more flexible and easier to convert an existing building to multifamily or even affordable? And so you'll see a lot of these strategies are trying to find ways to look at the existing building and housing stock. And are there ways that you can provide housing options through that existing stock? Number ten, looking at a CPA funding policy that they would prove, you know, every time an open space project comes before them, look also if there's a way to incorporate a well-designed cluster development or other way of providing affordable housing and open space conservation in the same project. And that's been done you know, quite a lot and very creatively. And so using your local funds to help incentivize those types of projects. The next one eleven is seeing if there's a way to streamline permitting to reduce some regulatory barriers and delays. And what I mean by that is when you're looking at affordable or multifamily, we can look at exactly the way it was written. I know that we've gotten some comments on this. Maybe there's a way to make even more permitting flexible. But the idea would be, is there a way to shorten the timeframe on those reviews without sacrificing the actual public review? And then number twelve is creating, or I'm sorry, evaluating the existing affordable housing overlay district. What properties does it include now? Are those the appropriate properties to include? Should that be changed? And really just opening that up to understand where is that overlay district and what opportunities even perhaps opportunities that were generated through the public comments in this process and then incorporated into the plan? How does the affordable housing overlay help to incentivize and allow the type of development that's envisioned by the community? And then thirteen, conducting an analysis to understand how your town policies and your zoning and your practices are either helping or hurting fair housing in your community and in the region. And this is the type of study that lots of communities do when they have federal funds. But communities can also do this kind of thing, even if they don't have federal funds because they want to further fair housing. Number fourteen is working to boost production of adaptable and accessible units. And we had some a number of ideas on how to do that as well within your regulatory framework. So the last category of strategies is capacity, education, and coordination. And again, this is all about does the town have enough enough resources and enough knowledge to really implement the ideas in this plan? And so one, looking at do you have enough information about the actual needs related to accessible housing? And we recommended that you studied that more so that when you create these programs that create more accessible housing and also help existing homeowners make their own homes accessible, that you're really targeting and being very strategic so that you're actually addressing the needs and the demand that are in the community. Number sixteen are doing, you know, this is a little bit housekeeping for the plan, but it's really looking at the plan every year and making sure that the goals and strategies are still relevant every year. You can amend this plan at any time. You just need to resubmit to D H C D. But as long as you meet the minimum requirements of the goals and strategies that I listed out before, you can pretty easily amend this plan. And so why wait five years to to take another look? Why not look every year and see what kind of progress are you making? And are these goals and strategies still relevant? Number seventeen, you already have status as one of the state's housing choice communities, which provides you access to funding and higher priority for state funding, among other things, and maintaining that access every two years it runs out. So really, I think you're already on top of it for this year, but we wanted to incorporate that as a way to in increase you continue to increase your capacity. Number eighteen, doing coordination and trainings and having housing forums. I know that you've already done some of this, but to really look at are there are there layers that we can put in place that are become regular in terms of boards and commissions coordinating, talking with each other about housing and housing needs and these strategies as well as trainings and reaching out to the community to continue to just not, you know, not just do housing community engagement around housing as part of this plan, but on an ongoing basis. And then number nineteen is working to form partnerships with both local and regional nonprofit housing developers. And you already do some of this. But I think there's, you know, you can be even more proactive around that. And so those are all of the strategies. I know I didn't, this is, you know, many, many pages of descriptive texts and examples and things. So hopefully I didn't go over that too fast or too slow. But in summary, and I think, oh, Liz, you put this slide here. I didn't know it was going to be here. So we already know that Acton's a very high highly desirable community. And so you want to protect that desirability and the things that you love about the community. You've already made really significant progress since your last housing production plan, and the town really took it very seriously and implemented a lot of the actions in that plan. As part of this draft plan, we've created these eight goals and nineteen strategies by trying to listen very carefully to the community, but also recognizing that there was disagreement in the community. And so we want to make sure that the way we've captured the goals and the the strategies in this reflects what the community wants to see. And then you know, we think that because you have the current plan and you're creating this plan as well as your safe harbor, and you've also been strengthening your capacity that you're really in a really good position to implement whatever you end up coming up with as a result of of this plan. So that's, I think, everything. We just went through some of the overall dates here that Liz already really mentioned. But we have it on this slide here, too. And then I think we can open up to comments, questions, suggestions, revisions. And I'll I'll step back and I, oh, Liz, did you have anything else? Were you raising your hand?
One thing. So thank you, Jennifer. And there really, there's so many strategies there for the town to consider in the future. And and again, this is really a five-year plan. And with nineteen different strategies, they're likely going to change over the years and some might not get implemented and some in further analysis might not be where the town chooses to go. So this is not the final analysis or authorization for these projects to go forward. These are really high-level strategies to take that next level of feasibility and review with the broader community. So I don't, I don't want to imply that by having the strategies there, it's they're all foregone conclusions of how to move forward. They're really at this level of information and strategic goals worth pursuing to that next level of detail and review.
Thank you, Liz and Jennifer. I think we'll go to the two boards, the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board for questions, and then we'll go to the public. So Selectmen, I can't see you now, but.
Yeah.
I'll make sure Jennifer.
It's John.
Yeah. You know, I you know, I've been, you know, through the report and I've been the selectman liaison to the advisory group. And I think it's, it's 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 most important, you know, that we get to our ten percent of forty B affordable threshold. And with the two hundred and thirty rental units of the Powder Mill Place, that will get us there. There, the Powder Mill Comprehensive Permit was appearing before the Z B A was continued from early April. It's now on for 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 June ninth. And once they get that permit, that would put us over ten percent comfortably over ten percent. And in pretty easy striking distance of the anticipated reset number from the twenty, you know, twenty senses with four forty-six Mass Avenue up for funding this summer. If they were to get their funding, they already have their comprehensive permit. If they then take that and get their 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 building permit, that should put us, you know, over the top on the twenty twenty reset number. Now, you know, doing all of that, hitting the ten percent for both decades doesn't end it in our, in our, in our in addressing, you know, housing needs, you know, in the years ahead. But what it does allow us to do is think about our housing needs, you know, really thoughtfully and responsibly, and how we can build support for projects in the future over the next ten years, you know, that the citizenry you know, can get behind. You know, speaking for myself, I, you know, see those needs as senior affordable and disabled housing, group housing, what I call downsized housing for people fifty-five and older who want to stay in Acton like the Grand View Project. And and how do we work in, you know, you know, multi, you know, you know, multifamily houses? You know, those are my goals. I had several comments from the, you know, from the report that I thought could be, you know, beefed up a little bit and in instances, you know, project balanced views, you know, of of circumstances. If you go to page seven of your of the report, this would be under the executive summary. We, you know, we do mention that we have many older, smaller units, both condominium and rental that would qualify for affordable housing under all measures. But they lack the restriction. You do break it out somewhat on page forty-one. But for those many people who might just look at the executive summary, I think in the it would be in the second paragraph on page seven, you know, that we should set out the precise number of these, you know, otherwise affordable units that are on Davis Road and Great Road and Parker Street, you know, to present a balanced view, you know, that we do have you know, affordable units although not qualifying. Because you you do in the in the fourth paragraph, we say we have six hundred and fifty-seven units at present, three hundred of which are really, you know, market rentals. So I think it needs that contrast between our older units and, you know, what we've created, you know, over the past, you know, ten to you know, ten years. And also on page seven, in the executive summary, we should say, you know, we're kind of, we say it kind of weekly and it's not really accurate that we have plans to achieve safe or the ten percent safe harbor. I'm sorry, that's, that's the, I'm sorry, that 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 would be correct. I was, I just described that. I was happy at the two years safe harbor. What has caused some anxiety, and this goes to page eight, where you set goal one up for production, where we need forty-three units per year. I got a number of comments today and you did explain why you have it set out that way. But, you know, I think it's important to work into into that, that that, and again, on page fifty-four, that with Powder Mill, that will get us to the the ten percent threshold. And and that should be set out clearly because that's an accomplishment. And that's really a credit to all of us who have who have worked on the you know, for affordable housing issues. Then going on to page sixty-two, again, where we said, let's reconsider and adopt mixed-use zoning for Kelly's Corner. We point to the town meeting vote in in two thousand, April of two thousand and sixteen, where it garnered just under sixty-three percent of the vote. In in a lot of my discussions, and this is around Kelly's Corner Infrastructure Project, which is really the key to, you know, the redevelopment of that portion of Kelly's Corner where the Kmart parcel is, where the bowling alley parcel is. Is people are going to want to know if you're talking about rezoning and to mixed use, exactly what is going to what developers have in mind to put on, you know, those parcels. And I certainly respect the view that came out of the January thirtieth public forum where they were looking at the Kmart parcel as a place where you can create mixed-use development, particularly, you know, rental housing there. In the conversations I have, there is significant sentiment. And I'd like to see it expressed in the in the report that many people view the Kmart parcel as a very special parcel. It's our last large undeveloped parcel in town. And they, you know, do not see, you know, large-scale housing on the parcel or some, you know, friendly forty B that's going to create a hundred or a hundred and fifty or or two hundred units of housing. And I think to create the balanced view, you know, particularly going forward, those sentiments should be expressed as well. And I know there's a divide even among the, you know, the act, the, you know, the town professional staff. You know, housing advocates and planners would take the view that, you know, housing in a Kelly's Corner area would draw residents, you know, to support restaurants and other retail establishments that are otherwise tricky, you know, others in that on the other side. You would say, including our chairman of our of our of our Kelly's Corner Steering Committee and Matthew Selby have expressed, you know, and I would share this view to a significant degree that we already have neighborhoods in that immediate vicinity, Kelly's Road, Spencer Tuttle Flynn, Minuteman Ridge, the fire, the red, the red apartments, the yellow apartments that are neighborhoods that are already there that if if you build there either retail or restaurants or other type establishments, they will come. So that's a balance that I think we have to, we have to strike and take both sides, you know, views, you know, into account to make it fair and garner the necessary support that we need going forward. So, you know, those are my comments.
Okay. Other members of the Board of Selectmen?
John?
Yes.
Yes, Dean Schrader here. Yeah, I've I've got a couple of comments. You know, it's a very impressive document. The the couple of things that I saw that I'm I'm really quite excited and favorable towards are the idea of encouraging mixed-use development at Kelly's Corner and probably along some of the areas along Route two A. And also the possibility of, you know, finding some of the unused office space and industrial spaces and look at the possibility of redeveloping those for housing. I think those are great ideas and I I think they'd be pretty popular generally. The one item that I saw in the in the proposal, which which frankly is a complete nonstarter for me, is a suggestion of raiding the Community Preservation Fund to create a a rental housing subsidy program. Yeah, I've served on the Community Preservation Committee for a number of years and I serve as the Selectmen's delegate to that committee. In the first instance, I'm I'm concerned about that. In the first instance, I'm, I'm concerned about that because. CPC has heard absolutely nothing about this, that people are proposing a. A raid on our funds. Especially upset about the fact that. And we have staff support provided by the planning department and they never mentioned it to us. And I think that's something. That certainly would, would require a great deal of discussion from CPC. The CPC has been very proactive in. Coming up with funds for affordable housing. We've basically approved every time that has ever been requested for affordable housing. Including some of the regional things like Habitat for Humanity. Including, although it hasn't gone to town meeting yet because of the shutdown. A half a million dollars to get started on the Housing Authority project on Mass, on Main Street. So I think, and. CPC has been very concerned and and very encouraging to all of those. I'm opposed to the idea of taking money from CPC. And putting it into this sort of a rental subsidy program. Because it's basically. My, my feeling about CPC is that this is supposed to provide. Items of enduring value. And there would be no enduring value left. By providing a rental subsidy program. Because at the end of the month, after the rent's been paid, there's nothing left. And it's just going to frankly attempt to bleed. Money out of a program which could be used in more traditional fashions, such as supporting the. Housing Authority with their construction programs, their acquisition programs. So I, I think. I feel very strongly, I feel that that wording should be struck from the plan. And I would not feel comfortable at all in voting for this plan. So long as that kind of wording is still there. And I've expressed these opinions to the planning board, so they're somewhere in the, in the mix. That's basically it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Anyone else on the selectmen? David?
Yes, hi. So I, I want to thank you for the document. It's, it's very impressive. I've read it once, but I need to read it again because there's. There's so much information in it. So I, as you say, said towards the beginning of the presentation today. Information you got from. People along the process, I think one of the biggest needs in town is. To be able to support seniors who want to stay in town. That's something there were people have come, come to me again and again about. I also think it's critically important that we sustain our, you know, our safe harbor and go into the, the 10% threshold. And 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 keep the 10% threshold. Residents expect that we'll be able to guide future projects. And we can't do that unless we've met the, the, the 10% threshold. So I think those, those things are critically important. I, I won't go into too much else, but I do have a question related to what Dean said. When rental assistance is offered. You know, from, you know, I'm not really in favor of it, like Dean is not, but I just wanted to ask if. If rental assistance is offered through the, with CPC. Allocated monies or or somewhere else, does that count as production?
No, it would not count as production.
Okay. So it even more reinforces what. Dean said, because you know, after you've paid those monies, at the end of the day, you. You've paid them, but you don't have anything to show for it. Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Rental assistance program, if it was using CPA funds, it would go through the CPA process. And go to the CPC and be presented to town meeting for, for more analysis and discussion. So it would go through that same process.
Yes, I understand. Thank you.
Peter, do you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, I have a couple of comments and, and a couple of questions. Can you hear me? I guess I'm not muted. I, I think it, it, it. Builds nicely off the last housing production plan we put together. I, I think we need to recognize that we've done a lot of, and congratulate all the people who've worked so hard over the past five years to. Get us where we are. A lot of these things we already do, for instance. Tax foreclosed properties, the last property that was in that status is now a. Two-family affordable housing unit in the historic district, beautiful property. We worked with Habitat for Humanity to get that project done. We've worked with them on other projects in town. We have relationships with all of these groups. The ACHC in particular has done a great job in working with developers to bring forward 40B projects, local initiative projects that. Have been very successful in town. So I think we need to recognize the strides we've made over many years to, to get to where we are now. Not that we don't have a ways to go, but. I gotta say that a lot of these strategies are laudable, but extremely expensive. The, the federal government has pulled out of, of subsidizing public housing. The state has a housing program, but, but they're not putting enough money into it to develop a lot of new units around the state. The rental housing program, I, I'm assuming if the CPC somehow did a rental subsidy program. That those units would be eligible for the subsidized housing inventory, similar to section eight. Subsidies in, in private apartments. Is, is there some way that they'd be eligible under the subsidized housing inventory?
Not in the rental assistance program. It doesn't create eligible housing units.
Okay, so that's, that's an enormously expensive initiative. I would, is it the same way with the creating, using ACHC fund, capital improvement funds to create accessibility into existing. Buildings? That doesn't make that a subsidized housing unit somehow, does it?
No, but Liz, in the past, to correct me if this has changed, in the past, DHCD has counted rehab units if they have 15-year restrictions. Is that still?
I, I think that's a little. Difficult to get that. I think that the ACHC program only provides those funds for units that are already deed restricted. So it's more of a preservation kind of program. Versus a production or create new unit program.
Yeah, okay. And and similar to the condominium program with the Acton Housing Authority, we have done that. We've subsidized the Housing Authority to purchase condominiums. We're subsidizing the Main Street project. Enormously expensive initiatives, you know, unless the, the town was to go to 3% for the CPA assessment rather than. One and a half percent. I'm not sure we have the funds to, to subsidize, to, to. Initiate these projects. But so those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Derek, do you want to poll your planning board?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have some comments. Specifically, the. Executive summary.
Okay.
I already sent two comments in. The first one is. Page six, last paragraph. And I'll read to you what it says. From the first sentence in full. That nearly two-thirds of Acton's housing units are single-family homes. With three-quarters owner occupied. The second sentence, this is the highest percentage of renters. Among the comparison communities. I'm not sure what got cut out in current pace, but. If you do the math, it says 50% of these units are owner occupied. But I'm not sure what got cut out. It, it just doesn't read well and it stopped me for a while. So I think, I think it needs more text or data.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
The second one is. Page seven, second paragraph, second line, naturally affordable housing. The fifth paragraph, first line, naturally affordable. And I believe it also shows up on page 41. And that one stopped me for a while. I couldn't figure out what a naturally affordable thing was. I, it took me about five to 10 minutes to understand that. It, I thought it was lingo and trench in housing related articles. Why not define naturally at the bottom of the page? Or use the phrase low price deed unrestricted. That is a lot easier to understand.
Yes, thank you for the comment.
I thought there was a lot of very useful data in this document. All in one place, and that must have taken a long time, but it really is very useful. But when I hit the. Goals and strategies. I thought this was overkill. But after going through it the third or fourth time. I think all the goals there make sense. On number three, which is. Excuse me, why I turn the light on better? Goal number three is create. Anyway, this is my answer to it. If you read a thing, it says, this is really low price. PCRC. That they're talking about. And as far as I know, almost all PCRCs are not low priced. So I'm thinking, why don't we create one? And use some sort of bonus to incentivize the developer to do this. We can go even further on that same goal and create it by right. Which for people who do not know what by right means, you don't need any permit to go ahead and do it. But I think that won't pass. Town meeting.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm just trying to follow along. What page are you looking at now? I'm looking at goal three, the conservation goal.
Let me look at goal three.
On page 54.
Conservation. That's in bold. Combine new residential development with conservation. Through creation of market rate and affordable homes that are clustered to preserve open space, natural resources, and scenic vistas. That is really what. Plan conservation, plan conservation residential community is. Except I do not know of any that has ever come through the planning board that is low priced. And I think with all the. Planning to identify. Places where we can increase the number of houses. I thought, why don't we create an incentive to have low-priced PCRC? But you need, you need incentive, incentives to get the developer to do so. That was my big thought in that.
Okay, other, other members of the planning board who have comments?
Yes, this is Ray Yacobi. I, I do. Actually, Derek, a housekeeping item, we got a note. We, when we did our roll call before, it was myself, Sam and Derek. Did do the roll call. We need to make sure that both John Capetta and Ann Ping answer the roll call before the meeting's over.
You, you don't need a roll call to open the meeting. Derek just declares it open. You need a roll call to close it.
Okay, well, just we make, before we end the meeting, to make sure that we, we've done that, that's all. I have, I guess, kind of three from kind of more general to more specific. First of all, I do want to thank all the work that's been done. I think this is a very. Well-thought-out, professionally-done document. And I want to acknowledge that there has been a lot of work, a lot of community outreach and a lot of input into the document. That is often, oftentimes overlooked. I do think there were two slides that I wanted to comment on that I think really capture the spirit. And the challenges of, of a plan like this. One was the tug of war. That was very well done. I mean, that really does capture that there are competing views, strongly held views. And you indicate in the plan that we did take those into consideration. So I think, I think that was very well done. The other one was the balance. I think those, the balancing slides kind of do indicate that this plan is in a great, in, in, in a large sense, is aspirational. And I think both those slides speak to that. So I wanted to, A, thank and acknowledge the work that. Liz, you and Jennifer done, but also town staff, because I just know the enormous amount of work that's going into it. And I think it reflects that work and I think it reflects what we want to do. The second thing I want to echo as chairman of the CPC. I want to, I want to. Second Dean's comments about getting into the, I'm troubled as chairman of the CPC that we were never even approached or talked to about it. I saw also philosophically have a real issue with that. Notwithstanding other communities do it, I have an issue there. So I personally feel that that should be taken out of the plan unless we got. Some significant input from the CPC to endorse that. Otherwise, I have to admit, I think Dean's correct, is we're trying to raid the CPC. And I think even if someone starts to use those words. We have a problem with the goal if, if that, if that's in there. The last one is more question, and and I apologize, this is, could be very well ignorance on my part. But the, one of the goals was considering, the words were considering creating an overlay district. Not knowing what that means exactly, what, what caused me angst was, does that mean we're going to create? Overlays that are going to be quote unquote, low-income housing or subsidized housing areas that can be construed as. Ghettos or what, I just, I just didn't know what that meant and what, how that fit in. So I had. And again, it could be, I don't understand it, but I had, that's how, that's how I interpreted it and I could be wrong and I'd have a problem with that.
Right, let me just clarify which one you're talking about. Strategy six is about the 40R overlay district near the South Acton commuter rail station. And then there's another strategy about looking at where the existing. Affordable housing overlay is already applicable and seeing if those are the. Places that you still want it to be applicable or if you want to change it.
Okay, the way, the way it came across was creating a specific overlay for low-income housing.
Yeah, I wonder, that, that's why I'm trying to clarify which one you mean, because strategy six is about creating a new overlay. Around the South Acton commuter rail station.
Maybe just clarification then.
Okay. Sure. So do you want me to speak to that now or is it?
Yes, yes, please, please.
So, strategy number six, the overlay district idea around the South Acton commuter rail station. Would be to really look, study the pros and cons of. Creating a, a new smart growth district that would not change the underlying zoning in any way. So people would still have the same rights that they do under the existing zoning. But it would create a new, you know, it's a term of art to call it an overlay, but it's a. It's exactly what it sounds like. It's like putting a, a blanket on top of another blanket on your bed. That you're not changing the underlying. Blanket, if you want to go with my metaphor. And you're putting something new on top that gives additional ability to develop, essentially is what it is. And it would be. A chapter 40 or smart growth district is something that the state allows. If it's written in a certain way and provides certain provisions. And I'm happy to get into more of that if you want the details.
That's helpful. That, that, I think you helped. It's fairly specific to South, as opposed to, no, that, you've answered my question. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and it has to do with the location of the train station and the proximity. Yeah, and it has to do with the location of the train station and the proximity.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the planning board is Sam Badger. Sam, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Um, very long document. Uh, I've gone through it twice and I still perhaps need to read it a few more times to get it all. But I can tell it's very well done. I'm so glad that, you know, it's all data-driven analysis and recommendations. And, and that's, that's really good. I, I really like that. Um, there may be a few things in the, in the document that I either didn't understand or, or need more explanation. But I mean, I still don't have a point uh, to, to ask all this yet. But overall, it's a very good effort. And so thank you, Jennifer and Liz. Guys have done a great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, John Capetta, can you hear me? Ray, you, you think, since I can't see everyone there, you think John Capetta is in?
The reason I mentioned, there was a, there was a, uh, in the chat, Roland sent out a chat saying that John and Ann Ping are in on the meeting. And what he said is they should be elevated to panelists. I know you're already a panelist, so I'm not sure if John needs to do something for that. But that may be why they can't hear. But they are on the call, so they are participating.
So, so Ann Ping's already been elevated to a panelist and can speak at any time. And can, you know, can unmute himself at any time. We don't know which call-in user John is. We need, we need to know his phone number to be able to do it. But you, you have a quorum without John.
I, I, I don't, but thank you. Thank, thank you very much, David.
Any further comments from the planning board?
Uh, one of the reasons I wanted John Capetta to talk was because he's the clerk of the planning board. But it looks like we can't get him to talk.
So John, I would suggest that you email your phone number to uh, me or one another member of the planning board. And then we can um, we can elevate you. But that'll take a few minutes, Derek, so that we can't do that right.
All right, well, let's, let's go to those who are participating in the meeting. Is someone there who wants to make a comment?
I want to mention also that comments can be made through email. Um, to, I think it's the planning department that, like on the website, it has the specific email address of where they can be sent. So if people are just listening, but want a little bit more time to formulate their comments, that's an option as well.
Is anyone raising their hand who's on the chat line?
Yeah, yeah, Joan, there are a handful of people.
Okay, let's recognize them.
Okay. Judy Hodge?
Yes?
You're on.
Okay, well, I guess I'm um, a little curious about where we'd find land to build something around the South Acton's train station, because it, you know, it's right in my neighborhood. I, I'm not against it, I'm just curious. Um, on the, on the uh,
It's, it's a whiteboard.
The goal of sustainability, you know, with energy efficiency and uh, compact footprints, I'd like to, to mention the possibility, and maybe it's already in the longer version, of uh, not having natural gas hookups, going to other, other forms of, not just efficient, but non-carbon uh, energy uh, in housing under the sustainability. Also um, I like the whole idea of conservation with clustered housing, to put houses closer together to save space as, as a planning strategy. Um, right now, I'm, we're on a two-acre lot. And so we can go tromping around and, and doing things. So I, I can see the appeal, but um, you know. But I, you know, to balance housing, housing needs with uh, land usage, I, I think that's a good goal. So I'm glad people are working on all this.
Judy, we have another, something going on behind you.
Yeah. Yeah, I gotta stop that. Okay. I'm trying to, okay. I guess uh, I guess I had something else going on. I'm trying to get out of here now. I don't know how to do it.
Okay, I, I can, I can do that for you.
Let me, I let.
Okay.
Kim Caston's?
Yes, she's, wants to come in.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Kim.
Hi, Joan. Um, I was, uh, my attention was caught by the population discussion in the report. And the reason um, that was, was because when the Acton Water District did their most recent five-year plan, um, they used the um, MAPC status quo um, um, population forecasts as the basis for their planning. And your population discussion says that those forecasts are much too low and that you expect the population to grow faster than was used in that planning exercise. And so I wondered how you've been coordinating with the Acton Water District to ensure that there will be enough water supply for the new building that you're anticipating.
Hmm, uh, we were using the, um, the population figures when looking at the MAPC numbers. They were low because their, their projections have already been reached. We had not um, projected water usage or worked with the water department, but that's a good suggestion. Thank you.
That would be a really good idea. Thank you for taking that into consideration.
Thank you, Kim.
Roy.
Hello.
Hi, Royce.
This is Royce, yes. I'm, I'm, I've enjoyed very much listening to the presentation. However, I'm unclear as to how to submit my suggestions or questions. Exactly how do, how do I address them? Where do they go? What's the process?
I think you, if you send them into the planning board.
No, no, Joan, not the planning board. Send it to the planning department, planning@actonma.gov.
To Roland?
To Roland.
So suggestions go to, go to Roland? And then how do they get considered for the plan then? What's the next step after that?
Um, so we will uh, work with, with the planning department who's already been collecting comments. In fact, they're posted on the DocuShare now, all the comments that they've collected. And we will work with them to put them all together, to um, include them in the document or bring them back for, for questions should they need a larger discussion.
So if I make a suggestion, I send it to, to the planning board, to Roland, it sounds like it's a one-way street. It goes, goes into him and then you listen to it and decide yes, no, or whatever. But there's no discussion. Is, is Emma hearing this right?
So all the comments received, you will see them back at this next meeting, whether it's the fourth or the eleventh, whenever that turns out to be, um, with an updated document. What we'll have there is all the comments that have been received and the disposition of all those comments.
All right, so we. If I may add, Royce, you're, you're, we, the planning board did receive your email and your um, input has already been posted to DocuShare. So it's in the process. So the typical process, it comes in, the planning department then just posts that without doing any editorial comment. So the public knows we've gotten comments. And then there's a process, as Liz mentioned, where staff will go through them and then incorporate, you know, incorporate them into subsequent versions of the document. So at this point, you're, the email that you did send has been received, it has been posted and is in process.
All right, tell me how I see the posted? Where, where is it posted where?
Oh, it's on DocuShare. It's on the town, in, in the planning department, in DocuShare. If you're not sure where, feel free to contact the planning department. They'll tell you exactly where it is on DocuShare.
Okay. And then at the, at the next meeting, we'll hear disposition of whatever comments we make. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
All right.
And I think that your particular comment was really about delaying the, um, the timeline. Is that why?
Well, I, I wanted to delay the timeline so that I can, so I can do a better job of, of creating comments. I have some thoughts about comments, but I don't have, I didn't, I didn't include them that. I was just more concerned about getting some time in which to, to form my, uh, my comments.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Jim Snyder-Grant?
Oh, hi. Uh, so I wanted to acknowledge that I wrote a few pages of comments and sent them in. So certainly don't need to say those out loud tonight. Uh, but there was one, uh, in particular, since it was about uh, the goals, which I think are very, a very public part of the document that I, I wanted to add and, and see if um, you know, uh, if, see if the authors had any particular comments about them, uh, reactions to them. The first one was about, the, the comments are about goal two. Um, which is both in the executive summary on page eight and also on, on page forty-five, I believe. Um, so the phrase that jumped out at me was young professionals. Um, I wasn't, it, it seemed odd that the word, the adjective professional was used. We already have a lot of professionals in town. Um, you know, I, I hear more from people about, gee, wish we had more plumbers or carpenters or electricians in town. Um, I.
Jim, thank you very much for that. Actually, we, uh, we got your comments early and they were very thoughtful comments. We all thought, and we've had some e, email dialogue exactly about that particular point and, and trying on different terms. And, and that was a very good point.
Okay, thanks, Liz. Um, so that made too much, did you end up talking about also the phrase low income in the, uh, lower income households in that goal two? Just because for those who haven't, uh, read the whole document, in the, in the planning world, in the housing world, there are very specific definitions of low income, very low income and extremely low income. And if you keep those in your mind, then you might think that the goal just applies to low-income households, not the very low or extremely low.
Yeah, thank you for that, Chris.
Great, thank you. I'm done.
Thomas Nickel?
Oh, sorry. That's Alyssa Nickel. Um, Thomas is my son. This is his iPad. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Um, uh, first of all, I want to say thank you just to, to reflect everybody else's um, comments on all of the work that's been done. Um, it was great to participate in the focus group as well as uh, complete the survey and attend the public forum and hear this presentation tonight. Um, I do want to say that I'm uh, strongly in support of uh, having an, a public comment session on May second. That sounds fabulous and um, needed. Um, so I'm, I'm glad that you're open to that. And also amending um, the timeline if we find that it's necessary. I'm glad to hear that there aren't any negative impacts to our safe harbor status. Um, were our twenty fifteen HPP to expire before this twenty twenty-one is approved. Um, I would specifically like to ask for more outreach to be done. Um, I, I participated in the um, the focus group. And immediately after that, I received an email um, to my personal email address, not my CPC address, um, inviting me to complete the survey. I saw the survey advertised on not only the town website, but also all of the town social media accounts. And it was also in Acton Town News, um, which is not coming out anymore because daily we're getting the COVID nineteen update. Um, so I'd really like to see um, this draft um, announced on, on social media as well as the website and the boards and committee email. Perhaps um, John, you could mention it at John, Java with John on Friday. Um, because I, I see that that's well attended. Um, and perhaps an, an Acton Town News could come out with a link to the document so that um, more people can read it and review it and comment on it. Because I know we had, you know, seven hundred fifty surveys completed. And I feel like um, the news needs to be shared more broadly. Um, I do have a one question uh, right now. Uh, I think Liz, you mentioned that the supporting documents, um, for example, the transcribed sticky notes were available and you invited us to dig deeper. Where might we find um, those supporting documents? Because I don't see them on DocuShare.
I think Jennifer might have that detail.
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to, I know that the planning department has versions of them. I'm sure they can put them up and I'd be happy to um, reshoot that if needed.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. Um, I just have one comment about goal three and um, goal four, which has to do with conservation and sustainability. Um, I'm very much in favor of preserving open space and um, sustainability. Um, but I was um, I was surprised that, that the only mention is combining new construction with open space conservation um, to save and preserve green space. When actually rehabbing existing homes would preserve even more open space. So it would be nice to have that mentioned in goal three. And in terms of sustainability, um, we're talking about uh, energy-saving appliances in, in this new construction. But really, again, rehabbing existing units is the most sustainable. So I'd love to see um, the rehab mentioned in those two goals. Because um, like my neighbor says, the, the greenest building is, is the oldest building. Thank you.
Tara Fredericks?
It's Tara from West Acton. And I don't want my name registered on Zoom, so please put T or something like that. It's a private corporation that the government is using right now. Um, anyways, uh, to my comments, I want to echo um, that we need more time to prepare thoughtful comments. Um, and I'm glad to know that the safe harbor isn't threatened if we ask for an extension, if the town asks for an extension. Um, CPC, HGC, these are very important committees. And I think they should have been consulted before this was released to the public. But given that it isn't, I feel like a, a proper four, four-week type period to allow these um, four to meet would be appropriate. Um, I like the idea that we make it clear that the forty-three per year will likely be met by the pipeline. I think that's really important to put in the goal. And I also like the idea of including a percent for rehab or reuse. Um, especially for once the ten percent is met. I think it's important that we make these goals for ourselves or else we will just leave them as an aside, that we'll consider something and then not do it. Because of the reasons that people state, that this goal three and four, the most sustainable is reuse and rehab, reserves the most open states and uh, water, et cetera. Um, so I want more strength to rehab. Um, and I gave you some suggestions on the memo that I sent in relative to specific changes. Uh, I note that in the presentation, slide twenty-one doesn't even mention rehab or reuse. It seems to be all about uh, new construction. I also mentioned that uh, the rental assistance money could go to rehabbing and then there'll be lower rent. Um, and um, most importantly, I think that it's important to label, not to label things that we think of as precious as a barrier to construction. Rehab and reuse um, won't impact town character, won't impact the environment or the resource water. So to suggest that, that the goal of town character, the number one goal in the master plan is somehow a barrier to affordable housing, I think is, is inappropriate. Um, also, um, I'd like to have you pull out the very and extremely low income numbers in the AHA waitlist, because it's really important for me to address the very and extremely low income people first. And I'd like very much to know what those numbers are, especially for group homes too. So I'd like to get those numbers. Um, and um, I'd like the people that are abutting these target parcels that are in the documents to get a butter notices so that they can weigh in on this, to send an actual document out and say, hey, look, we're um, putting this down as a potential target for development, please weigh in. Um, and then uh, lastly, the appendix A appears, which is the memo regarding the analysis for condo buy-down program. It appears to be written by folks that aren't that interested or, or don't want to do it. It, it seems to have lots of reasons why not to do it. Uh, although there is some great information in there that we are going to be using. I would like to get a plan for, by people who do want. I would like to get a plan by people who do want to do it. I know there's a small group of people, they're developing a plan, and that they're very excited by it, and it seems to be very affordable, very doable. And I'd like to see a plan for rehab reuse by folks that really want to do it. So that's it, and thank you very much. And I echo the idea of a session where we actually all get to speak. You let me speak right now, but a lot of people didn't show up, I think, because they thought they weren't going to be able to speak. To have a session where we get to talk, where the public gets to talk. The workshop didn't allow us to speak. And I think that that was, I think that we can make up for that by having a session that's devoted mostly for the public. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Franny Osmond?
Hi, Franny.
Hi, let me just turn off the stove so it doesn't make so much noise. Hi. Franny Osmond, sixteen Half Moon Hill.
Right.
I would like to just urge you to approve the housing production plan. I am in a housing group and continually care about improving housing. I heard someone say something interesting. They felt that supporting subsidy of low-income families doesn't make a lasting improvement on the town. And maybe that was you, Dean, I'm not sure, but I question that. It seems very important, and that's another thing I wanted to say to you, is that I would like to see CPA dollars and any other resources go to supporting low-income families in the same way as you, or I, or any of us have a lasting effect on our town. Being able to keep people here who might have trouble affording the high rate of housing to live here seems to me shapes our town and does have a lasting influence. So I wanted to encourage you to do that, too. I would like to support Goal Four, which is environmentally sustainable new construction. And I would like to support that Kelly's Corner, things that support housing in Kelly's Corner. I was sort of dismayed to hear recently, I wasn't at the meeting, but I heard that it was quoted that people were against housing in Kelly's Corner. Somebody said that the, at some meeting, the Board of Selectmen said that. And I was disturbed by that, because I have been in a lot of communities that do support it, and I was under the impression from many public meetings I've gone to that reviewed the housing plan, that that was actually something that would be, having mixed use there would be a very great asset to our town. I would like to support Strategies fourteen and fifteen, increasing housing opportunities for individuals with disabilities. And the other thing I just want to mention, in my mind, somebody said, how can we add more housing to South Acton? We have a large train station, we now own property around it also. And there are creative ways that we could have a combination of mixed use, parking, and solar. There are ways that we could develop it, and what a wonderful place to be able to live or have more retail is in things that support the train station. So I just wanted to say that there are creative ways that we can add housing to there. So those are the things that I support, and thank you so much for all the work on this plan.
Okay, thank you, Franny. Next.
That's all, John.
That's all? Yeah?
Joan?
Yes, Derek.
Anping has been waiting, I think, for about ten, fifteen minutes now. I see that, I see that he is, mic is not on and the video is not on. I don't know how he can hear us.
He can hear us, but he needs to unmute himself.
Oh, Anping?
So. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, finally.
Okay, Anping, we need you for a roll call so that we have a call room for the planning board. So will you list your name?
Yeah, so I would like to postpone the vote today.
Sorry?
I would like to, you know, not make a vote today.
He doesn't want to vote today.
We're not voting today. We are not voting today.
Okay, that's good, because there are so much dog, you know, so much material we need to understand.
Okay, but at least you are now recorded as being present at this meeting. Thank you very much. Do you have any comments?
I do have some questions, you know, for the Powder Mill apartment, which has two hundred thirty-one unit, correct?
It's quite large.
Yes, quite large, you know, based on the news I read, it kind of like a two-hundred-something unit. So this will be added to the forty-B units. But we have two hundred thirty new new housing units added to the total housing unit. Does that mean it generates another twenty-three units? Twenty-three units for the forty-B to meet?
You are referring to meeting the goal of forty-three units for one year? What do you call it?
Yeah, I know it's forty-three units per year, because we have eighty-five hundred total housing units. So if we count Powder Mill apartment, which has over two hundred units, so this adds to the forty-B quota. Basically, right now, we have, I did the calculation, right now we have less than six hundred forty-B units in town.
Have, I think you have a total that it may be more than just forty-B, it's six hundred and fifty-seven units.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That means if we add this two-hundred-something unit in there, we are going to see, basically, that wouldn't be over 10% already, right?
Correct.
But for this new complex, will another twenty-something new unit be generated as a forty-B target?
Well, I think that no, because I think what you're talking about is as the units get added, they also then create more housing units in general, meaning that you're going to need additional affordable units?
Yes, that's what I mean, because currently we have eighty-five hundred units. So if we have two hundred thirty units, new unit, that means the town going to have eighty-seven hundred thirty units. So the new 10% would be eight hundred seventy.
So it does, it works a little bit different in that the denominator of that 10% fraction is the census that's done every ten years. So the census that was taken just earlier this month, April 1st was the actual day, those are the units that will be in the denominator. And because Powder Mill didn't exist this particular month, it's not going to count in your bottom, in your denominator of the 10%.
Okay. Now Tara, you know, mentioned, you know, purchase plan to buy some, you know, apartment, which can be added to the forty-B.
Yes.
So right now, you know, we all know the more new housing unit we build, the more debt we have. Basically, for every new unit we build, 10% going to be added to the new forty-B target. So I think Tara's idea is like to buy some existing unit, not to build a new unit. That would be, make the forty-B target easier to achieve.
Yes, and so that's why two strategies, both Strategy Number Two and Three, really look at that program to evaluate that going forward, because there's some expenses with that that would have to be appropriated, analyzed, and looked at, but exactly that, that that was two strategies towards that.
Okay. So another question is, you know, I know the state has a 10% for each town to meet for the affordable housing unit. But I know there are some towns, they never tried to meet any, you know, 10% for, you know, Carlisle. Carlisle has been trying every possible way not to build any new apartment complex.
Yeah, every town is different.
Yeah.
Has a lot of, Carlisle doesn't have public water, for example, so development there is very difficult. So it has a lot more natural barriers. And so there's not a lot of developers who are proposing forty-B development, right? That's, the safe harbor gives you more control, and Carlisle hasn't had to, you know, work on that to the same extent that Acton has much more development. Acton has a lot of rental, much larger population, very, much denser town than Carlisle. So very different town and makeup.
Yeah, I know it's like, you know, if you calculate the town size per se, Acton, you know, the town size is not much bigger than Carlisle, but we have almost five X population than Carlisle.
Yeah.
So that's kind of like a very populated area. So to build more and more, it may not make sense. Because, you know, the area only twenty-five, no, we have twenty square miles for the town. So basically, four mile wide, five mile length, that's the town area. So we have almost twenty-four thousand residents currently. So which, you know, if we compare to Concord, Carlisle, Boxborough, even Littleton, we are the most populated town already.
I think you're talking about the tug-of-war or the balance that people have brought up of, you know, balancing the development versus the need for providing housing to lower-income households. So that's, I think your point is well-taken.
Okay, yes, that's, yeah, that's my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else on the planning board?
I don't see John Capello listed at all.
Okay. So we will continue with the Board of Selectmen meeting, if you want to adjourn your meeting.
I think there's one person who still has their hand up. No, one person raised their hand after everybody else spoke.
Okay.
So Joan, Joan, do I need to, Derek?
What?
I make a motion that we adjourn the planning board meeting.
Sure.
We need a second.
I second it.
Okay, I'm seconded.
And you're supposed to do a roll call vote.
Right, so I'll start. Ray Jacoby says aye to the motion.
Aye.
Anping, you need to mention, say your name.
Oh, Anping Liu, aye.
Sam Baric Chen. Eric Chen, aye.
Sam? Yes, Sam, Sam did it. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Bye.
Goodbye. David, there was one more?
Yes, I can let her talk, come on.
Okay. Do you want to bring her on?
Yep, Sarah Cletty. I don't know, Joan, I guess she's not speaking.
Okay. All right, John, we're back to the agenda. Town meeting warrant?
Should we sign off?
Thank you, yes.
Yes, thank you very much for hosting us, and we'll be in touch about next steps.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you. So we, last week, we had an initial discussion about the town meeting warrant, just kind of making sure that the document is all set to go once town meeting date has been established, so we can start or finalizing the planning for that process. There were two articles we spoke, we talked about last week. I'm going to try to share my screen here to show you. One was Article 11 relating to the parking lot, and the other one was the Strawberry Hill article. So there was, the board had asked to expand, let me just share this, hold on a second here, share. Share. Okay, so I can try to make this bigger, but this is Article 11.
Okay.
And the main, the primary feedback from the board was that the article should include all uses that we use the parking lot fund to pay for. And so this article is now revised to reflect that intent.
Oh, good. Any comment from the board? I guess we're all set on this, John.
It looks like Peter is saying something. No. Okay, and the next item was.
I'm sorry, John, I had, I did have one question on this wording. It references the statutes. I think we had a special act also that allowed us to use parking lot funds for transportation, the shuttle and whatnot. I thought we had to get a special act to be able to do that. So can you just ask town council if it makes sense to reference a special act in there as well?
Add it to that list of references, yeah, okay. Yep, definitely, it's a good suggestion. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So the next item was, on the article previously, was a, was a, was a site easement for Strawberry Hill Road. Town council determined that we don't need to actually seek approval to have a site easement, but we do need town meeting approval for the board to release the restriction that had been in place on the property, which was part of a two-step process to, you know, figure out that situation that you've been talking about over the last year. So town council provided the article shown here, which is meant to replace the article that you previously had discussed related to the Strawberry Hill Road property situation. And it's basically just releasing the restriction that had been put in place in 1986.
And that would give us the easement that we need for the site distance?
No, so the, what the steps are, the town, the selectmen will get the easement, which you have the authority to do already. And then, but you don't have the authority to release this restriction. So after you get this authority to release the restriction, then you can go and complete the process of accepting the site easement and releasing the restriction at the same time.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Anything else?
Well, the board had previously voted to recommend the Article 31 in its previous form. So we could either, I could either ask you to reconsider that now or later.
All right, is there a motion to approve Article 31 as rewritten?
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second, but John, as a friendly amendment, I think you want to say that we recommend this, right? Not approve it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, recommending the article, yes.
Yeah, second for me.
Motion made and seconded. Will the clerk call the roll?
I will. Mr. Barry?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Trotter?
Aye, unanimous.
Motion carries. Anything else, John, on the warrant?
Thank you. No, so for Article 11, I'll just go back again and get a little bit more language in here and bring it for your review at a future meeting.
All right, yeah, John, just on that, I think we got a note from Franny just now. She said it was a statewide law, so.
She said it was a statewide law, so obviously they have changed the statutes to allow money to be used for transportation purposes, so I'm not, you know, it may not need to be changed, but that was a question I had, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll just look into it anyways, just to make sure, we have time. Thank you. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, while we're talking about the warrant, the town meeting warrant, I'd like to raise an issue for people at least start to consider. Article 5 talks about town capital infrastructure. And, uh, and what, what we had been in favor of a few months ago was voting about $900,000 of various capital items. And in light of what's been going on, I'm sure that there's going to be quite a, a financial burden on the town going forward into next fiscal year. So I'd like, like us to consider that, ask the town manager to come up with some, a priority list or a revised proposal for this that we can have in our back pocket based on what kind of funding is available.
Good idea. John?
Is what?
John, yeah.
Um, yeah, we certainly, since a few weeks ago, have been really looking at the whole situation, you know, what impacts our finances, in particular, how it will affect what we've already proposed for 21. I know the question at the recent finance committee meeting, and I believe with the board also, of holding another ALG meeting, maybe in, in May, when we have a little more information about what's, what's happening. And as part of that, I certainly will bring forward recommendations for any changes. And in particular, as Selectment Chair pointed out on the capital, if there's something that is a concern, that any input would be great. I think as, as you know, we, we did make changes at the end of the process to bring it in a little bit less than it was, but there is approximately 890,000 in capital, of which 750 is appropriations from free cash. Sorry, sorry, 740 is appropriations from free cash for projects. And then there's 150,000 set aside for borrowing. Uh, we did, we did get some news that Kelly's Corner is going to cost slightly less than we were planning for, which since it's borrowing, it's not going to be a significant reduction in the FY21 ask, but it is certainly something that we'll include in any recommendations that we bring forward for changes.
Okay.
Yo, if, Madam Chair, can I just make a comment?
David, yeah?
I, I think Dean's suggestion is, is good, but to me, we have to start with what, some kind of estimate for what, how the, our revenues might go down, right? So if we are expecting, you know, 900,000 or a million dollars less in revenue, uh, we need that starting, that starting point, and that needs to be made, you know, that estimate needs to be somewhat official in my mind, uh, you know, as an expectation. Obviously, there, it's predicting the future, but, um, anyway, I just wanted to say that we need to start with an estimate of what, what we thought the downturn might be for us.
Okay, anything else on town meeting, John?
Not at this time, but we're going to continue to work on that and keep that in good shape.
Okay. Now, my tablet has died, so what's the next agenda item?
The next is the review concepts for small business relief measures.
Ah. Well, I'm going to go have my picture taken tomorrow in front of the restaurant. But Selby had quite a good list of options.
Yes, he put together a great list of things. You know, there's, there's programs that were recommended that we've been looking into. Hold on, I'm just trying to bring it up.
I think we can certainly do something about, you know, the little triangular signs that say takeout only for the restaurants. Normally those aren't allowed, but in this time.
Yeah, so just to walk you, thank you, just to walk you through a couple of the ideas that we've been talking about. And there was also a discussion of this at the finance committee meeting last week preliminarily. And we've been, you know, speaking with business leaders in, in the community for their ideas as well. But here's just a quick rundown of the ideas. Uh, one is related to liquor license fees. Uh, we charge $5,000 for alcohol on premises license and 2,000 for beer and wine. And some of the restaurateurs are asking whether there'll be any relief from those charges since they're not allowed to have people sit in their establishments. So that's one item. Uh, also, the common vitriol license is something that is a smaller item, a hundred dollars a year, but it's related to seating and capacity and allowing people to be served food in, in a business. And since that's currently unavailable, that's something that, that there could be consideration for credit or some sort of waiving of a portion, just as a show of relief for those folks that pay these fees. Another item is meals tax, so we, I guess earlier in the budget process, Selby had proposed that we do a, a grant program for small businesses to help with vacant storefronts and try to provide rental assistance for small businesses to try to get them, incent them to go to one of these vacant storefronts. And it was part of a statewide grant program that the state would actually match any local contributions due to some logistics and some unknowns about how the program works and whether or not we're able to do such things as the local government. It wasn't included in the budget as a recommendation, but Selby's raising it again here as an opportunity to, to look at maybe a dedicated funding source, which be the, which would be the meals tax, and identifying a small portion of that to set aside for this purpose. Uh, it would require a town meeting action to do so, but it's, it's just one more suggestion. Again, another one is signage. There are several sign regulations that we enforce here in the town. And the town could consider temporarily suspending enforcement of certain sign-in regulations, especially ones related to banners and sandwich boards and temporary things that some of these businesses may need to do to try to grab people's attention temporarily to advertise new services that they're doing and things like that, that they wouldn't be doing under normal business circumstances. There are also fees for temporary signs, which the town could consider waiving along those same lines. Other programs of small business appreciation, like we've done with the Acton Restaurant Week. And that's something that, you know, we will continue to work on with the Economic Development Committee and with our partners at the Middlesex West Chamber of Commerce. Uh, so any support for that would be appreciated. Another item, which is actually on the agenda for later today, or tonight, rather, is the Fourth of July celebration. That is a big event for the community and we, it's very popular. It's a regional event, basically, these days, and it's, it's primarily, or it's funded in many ways through sponsorships from local businesses. And many of those local businesses aren't in positions to be providing sponsorships this year. So, uh, this was seen as a relief measure to say, sort of take that request off the table or, and have those donations not be needed. Gold's Clothing is one business, for example, that pledges every year and has pledged again to do it this year. And maybe not having this celebration would be one, one more thing we can do to help them keep some of their funding that they need. Uh, property tax abatements, I know there's been questions about that and comments about that. That's something that we'd have to look into further, but that was another item mentioned. Zoning changes, the Board of Selectmen already talked about this a few weeks ago, as it relates to drive-through windows. And the, we've, we've, I've passed on your, your directive to the planning board to consider this and start talking about this matter as it relates to, to drive-throughs for the next annual town meeting in 2021. There are other things in zoning that we could look at to try to help businesses navigate this difficult climate. Uh, one thing that the town of Arlington, I think Somerville and a few other communities are doing, or just started doing last week, is they've created a fast-track permitting process to allow restaurants to sell their food inventory direct to customers as if they were grocery stores. Usually you can't sell leftover, or not leftover, but you can't sell supplies direct if it's not prepared at a restaurant. But, uh, that is one idea that some communities are doing to help some of our restaurants survive during this difficult climate. Uh, the Takeout selfie campaign, I've already discussed earlier. Uh, we hope that you all continue to, one thing, a selfie, you're supposed to take yourself, a picture of yourself. You, you can still do it, but it's, uh, so we encourage people to check that out. Another thing is Senator Eldridge filed the bill, SD 2888, which I know some of our local business folks are very supportive of, and it requires insurance companies to provide business interruption coverage related to COVID-19. So if the board was interested, and we can provide more information about that. If you're interested in writing a letter of support, we'd be happy to help facilitate that. And then finally, uh, one of our local businesses actually brought us, brought our attention to AG Healy's Small Business Relief Program that was announced recently with grants of up to 50,000. And that's something that we are applying to a participant of, and it would allow us to prepare applications and help some of our small businesses. I think the federal money that was set aside for this, I think, was, was cleaned out very quickly. But I believe the federal government took action today to add more funding to that, but I'm still understanding.
Yeah, the, the Senate approved a $500 billion package for hospitals, but I think in significant part, another round of small business funding. So hopefully this bill would provide that it got to the small businesses that it was intended to get to the first time. You know, not law firms of 450 people or hedge funds and stuff like that. Or what was that, the, the shakeback or something with, with 189 locations nationally, it took $10 million, but they were embarrassed and gave it back.
Okay, let's, um, is there a motion to suspend some of the signed bylaw situations that affect local businesses?
Well, how, how do we have to go about that? Does that require, is that selectman action? What, what actions here would require town meeting action versus select board action?
Well, just focusing on the zoning, the bylaw, which was just mentioned. We can't change the bylaws without town meeting, but as we did with the plastic bags, we can, we can change how we implement enforcement of the bylaw and on a temporary basis due, due to a state of emergency. Uh, I think we can work with town council to figure out exactly what vote would need to be taken, but uh, we wouldn't be changing the bylaws, we would just be temporarily suspending the way we enforce them. Or changing the way we enforce them.
And that's, that's a non-money item, so I think that's easy for us to do.
The only monetary part of that would be for signage, there is a fee for temporary signs. And the board could choose to not charge that fee during the certain period if, if that's what you're interested in.
Yeah, I think, I think we should permit them to put the signs up during this COVID period. Anyone else? Dean?
Benham Chair, yeah, I would, I, I would make a motion that, that the Board of Selectmen authorize the town manager to deal with town council and investigate suspending enforcement of the signed bylaw until the end of the COVID-19 emergency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. Barry?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Trotter, aye, unanimous.
Thank you.
Uh, John?
What about the, selling the food at the restaurants? Selling the inventory?
So, so if, if I may, I think, I believe the last motion was, was directing me to work with town council to, to implement what we just talked about, right?
Yes.
Yes, for signage.
Signage.
Okay, and I would also work with the Economic Development Committee to make sure that they're involved. For the, the one you just mentioned about, about selling food from restaurants, we, I think, if the board was going to be interested in that, I think the directive would be to have me look with, work with the Board of Health or ask the Board of Health how they feel about it, or, or how they could do it.
Okay.
Because it's, it's something that they regulate.
Right. All right, so.
So the, the, the one I think that's most important to the restaurants, you know, is the first two listed in the table on the screen, the liquor license fee reimbursements and the, uh, well, that, that's, that's the main one. Or the, 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 the top two, I don't know if those we want to do or not. Um, I think that, that it makes sense that the restaurants aren't making any money selling liquor at this time. And it, it, it's a, it's a small thing that we can do.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I would just say, I, uh, Selby's got a chart here. It's, it's $105,000 for the liquor license, so it's, it's it's a little more than a small thing, but I'm in favor, but I don't know if we need input from other town boards before we would vote on that.
So the, the, the FIDCOM did discuss that particular one. I don't think that they voted on it, but I would say that the sense was in favor, but perhaps we should loop back with them. To, to make sure.
I noticed earlier tonight, Selby had sent his memorandum onto the EDC. I forwarded to the Finance Committee and told them we were taking it up and we'd be looking to both committees for their reactions and responses. Um, I think we should bring, bring them back into the loop.
May, maybe we can bring that up as an agenda item next time and ask for the committee input in the meantime.
Yeah. Um, the, how would you think about, um, with, with the liquor license, is, is that, i- is that a refund the select board can vote? John?
Uh, we'd have to look into the logistics of that and whether, whether it's something that we do as a next year, or, or if we would actually be able to refund it. Um, I can, I can look into that with finance between now and the next meeting if there's interest in, in us doing that.
Sure, I would think so.
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Um, and the meals tax, um, you know, setting up a, a fund using the annual real, annual revenues from the, the meal sex, that would require a town meeting action, is that correct?
I, it depends on how the, the funding is to be dispersed, but if it's something that is interesting, we can do some more work on it and, and determine whether it needs to go on the warrant or whether it's something we could do otherwise.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's worthwhile pursuing.
Okay, great.
On this bill that's, that JB Eldridge just got filed in the article, I think what it was talking about was requiring the insurance companies to pay these claims now. Insurance companies are saying, well, they're not covered under our policy. I thought the bill said that the state would reimburse them later on. So can you just get us a summary of that bill from Jamie's office so that we, we know what, what exactly the details are?
Yes, absolutely.
Sure, we'll support it, but, yeah. Whoops, there's a, there's a link here, so maybe we have it already.
Anything else, John?
Uh, no, not at this time. We just wanted to, you know, this is a conversation that we. we can continue to have, just wanted to get some ideas in front of you early so that if there's anything in particular you want us to focus on or to stay away from, that we get that feedback, feedback now as we continue our work. And I think I have that.
Benham Chair?
Dean?
Yeah, I just like to circle back again on the, the idea about allowing restaurants to sell groceries. I don't think we came to any decision on that, I think that that's definitely something the town manager should deal with the Health Department and the Board of Health about. I'd be amenable to it, but I don't think we gave them clear direction, so I think that I'd like to see some more information about that at our next meeting.
Okay, that sounds good, Dean.
And then, then also with respect to the liquor license fee reimbursement and the meals tax, use of the, the meals tax for, as a grant funding source, could we look at the other side of the equation and have the Finance Department and see how that would impact finances generally, just so we know?
Yeah, yes, absolutely, I mean, I think generally, basically every dollar we get from meals tax goes directly into the general fund now, so it would just be that much less available. So if it's, if we put 40,000 into the program, then that's 40,000 less for all the other uses. We can, we can include some more in-depth analysis as we bring the idea further along.
Okay, next agenda item, please.
That would be?
The Fourth of July.
The Fourth of July, so as I mentioned in my last, the Fourth of July celebration is something that we're very proud to host every year. It also is, is expensive, and it's not a year that we have surplus in the rec revolving fund to help pay for it, sometimes we need, and it's also a year that we're really looking to reduce our expenses in the next few months, given what, what else is going on. Also, the overarching concern is the public health risks that we're not aware of, and right now, right now, there's not really a, a sense that we'd even be congregating in, in groups of 10,000 like we do on the Fourth of July. So given that we may not know anymore than we know today, you know, four or five weeks from now, and given the amount of work that it takes to prepare and plan and coordinate all the logistics associated with this event, unfortunately, it's the rec folks and land use recommendation that we, if, we need to recommend not doing it this year. And so we just wanted to, before we make such a big decision, we wanted to make sure the Board of Selectmen had an opportunity to weigh in on it and give us any feedback or concerns that you, you all have.
Well, I think we should not go forward with it, but I'll hear from the other members of the board.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see how it could happen, the virus is not going to be gone by the summer. I, I just don't see how we could, how we can do it. So I, I, I agree that, you know, I, I think the proposal from the Recreation Department was to cancel recreation events up until July 15th, including the Fourth of July event, and I would agree with that.
Yeah, it's such a, I'm sorry.
Dean, he had his hand up, Peter.
I would, I concur with David, I think, you know, there's just nothing we can do about it, I think we definitely should cancel it and, and the other programs as suggested by the Recreation Department.
Peter?
Yeah, I was wondering if we could, it's such a community event and so, so important in Hackton's history, I was wondering if we could do some kind of virtual thing. Maybe the Rec Department could put together some kind of program, Acton Minuteman, maybe one of those concerts in the past, or something like that, I, I don't know, I just had that idea, I don't know if it makes any sense, I don't know if we could do fireworks, that's the biggest expense probably of the whole.
Yeah. John?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm for both pieces, canceling the Fourth of July celebration and the various concerts and special events in Nara through July 15th.
Okay. Do we need a vote, John? I think it's unanimous.
Yeah, I think I, I have what I need in terms of feedback, so I appreciate that your input, and it's a very difficult decision, but I don't, like, like you've all said, I don't know that we have a, a choice, given what we're dealing with right now. So, and we can try to work with Acting TV to run, run some programming that day, because we, they record most years the celebration, so maybe we can do a marathon of all the people on the Fourth of July on Acting TV. Okay, and just of note, of those concerts that were to be scheduled, one of them was the classical Selectman Concert from, from, it's been going on for many years, so just wanted to call that to your attention as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Next item.
The next item is the farmer's market. So the farmer's market, as you recall, last year, we, we can't, I came to the board and said, can we, what do you think about using a different configuration of not just Pearl Street, but also a part of Windsor?
Yeah.
You know, it, it worked out pretty well, I think, overall, I think people liked it and it worked out well, but I think the market itself prefers to just go back to using Pearl Street only. And so that is the request of, of, of the board this year, is if, if we're comfortable doing that. As you recall, there was a, a house or two houses that were being built on Pearl Street that kind of were disrupting the use of that stretch, and we believe that that work will not be disrupting the farmer's market this year, if it, if it were to be allowed to, to continue. Farmer's markets are, I think the Board of Health would weigh in on any concerns related to public health as it relates to the farmer's market, that's not really the intent of me bringing this to the Board of Selectmen tonight, although any feedback on that would be welcome. This is more about just making sure that you're comfortable with us using Pearl Street only, or having them use Pearl Street only.
I think as long as the neighborhood is in agreement, there's no problem going back. Other comment? Peter?
Are they on the special services list?
I believe that farmer's markets are, are allowed under certain conditions, so I think we'll, we'll definitely be double checking and confirming that leading up to when they're supposed to start, but I believe, I believe they are allowed.
I, I don't see how the farmer's market could work there, right, any more than the fireworks could work, there's too little space and too many vendors. I, I just don't see how that works. I, I, I would like to see the plan from the farmer's market folks as to what they would like to do. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that any farmer's market couldn't work, I'm saying that on Pearl Street, it couldn't work. I mean, and I go most weeks, I mean, I love the farmer's market, it's not that I'm against the farmer's market, I, I usually bicycle there with my wife, you know, I like going there, but I don't see how that works. There, there's no way people could maintain a six-foot distance. And we, we, you know, the Board of Health closed down a park and people were nowhere near as close as they are at the farmer's market, nowhere near, I mean, in order of magnitude.
Yeah, I would agree with David, but is this something we should take to the Board of Health if it's?
Well, so, but if we're, we're approving the use of the street, I mean, the Board of Health can also, I think, cause it not to happen if they voted that, but if we're approving the use of the street, I would like to see a plan from the farmer's market folks as to how they're managing the distancing. And my, my expectation is that, that it's not going to, they're not going to be able to come up with something.
Okay, Dean?
Yeah, I'll, I'll concur with David on that. You know, that, and when I go to the farmer's market, you know, you've got, you're basically politely elbowing people out of the way. And yet contrast that, I was at Donlin's today and everybody's got to be six feet apart, you know, one-way traffic lanes and all that kind of stuff. Yeah, I don't think logistically there's any way that, that it can work, and I, I think that, you know, although it'd be sad to cancel it, I just don't see how that can possibly happen and meet all of the social distancing guidelines that we're working with with all the other food establishments. And, you know, I've certainly seen some emails back and forth, you know, people being concerned that some of our existing brick and mortar stores aren't giving enough social distancing, and then for us to encourage and permit something like that, that you know is going to be crowded, it just doesn't seem like a good idea to me, I'll confer, concur with David on that.
We, we have a note here from Deborah, the, she thinks the board of the farmer's market is considering a reduced number of vendors and a bunch of protocols to control movement of people through the market. Some public health people are discussing the importance of farmer's markets during COVID. I mean, I agree generally, but I don't think we ought to, you know, now cancel it for the entire season, it could be July they might open, we ought, I, I agree with David, we ought to ask for a plan and see where the status is when they want to open, maybe not the middle of June when they usually open, but maybe the middle of July, and kind of see what, see what the plan is and what happens develops before we just say shut it down for summer.
So I, just, the farmer's market organizer had emailed me a few weeks ago, and I didn't mention it in my presentation earlier, but they have been working with the Health Department, the Health Division staff to try to identify ways that they can do it safely, and I think the expectation is that they wouldn't do it unless the Board of Health was comfortable with how, how they were going to do it. But I think all of your concerns, especially if we're reducing the size of the space, I mean, last year if it was Pearl and Windsor, it was a longer stretch, maybe you could spread, spread out more, and if I'm asking you tonight to make it smaller, I can understand why the board may not be ready to make that decision tonight. I think that they want to get things going, but I think they could certainly wait another week, if, if we wanted, if I wanted, if you wanted us to hear more from Board of Health and come back next week, we can do that.
That's a good idea, let's do that.
Can I, can I just make one more comment? The, the other possibility is if we relocated it to an area that had more space, you know, that where you could have more elbow room. You know, the, the train station parking lot is another, is a possibility. You know, you, you could spread everybody out there so that each vendor got its own row, but so. There's one person with their hand raised, but considering what happened before, Kenneth, if you would like to talk, please send me your full name and your street in your chat. And also Claire's sister would like to talk. Do, Claire, your, can I allow Claire to talk, Joan?
Yes.
Claire, you're on.
I, I had the, I was going to suggest, that's why I was going up and down, I was going to suggest the same thing David did, I mean, we, we've actually had, the whole entire summer carnival was at the, the Miriam Parking, school parking lot one year, so we could certainly, you know, fit a farmer's market in one of any of the school parking lots, I think. And I, and I would like to just speak up for the, you know, the vendors there, it would be nice if they had an opportunity to make some money, especially the farmers, because their stuff is going to, you know, rot in the fields if you can't, so rather than postpone it, I would hope that we could relocate it, I think that would make, just for this year, we know that they're going to relocate to Gardner Field eventually, so I'm not sure what the attachment to Pearl Street would be for this year.
Okay, thank you.
And the, the, the other person is Kenneth Coleman from the farmer's market. Can I?
Yes, bring him on.
Kenneth, you're on. Did you have to unmute yourself?
There we go, does that work?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So when we, we proposed going back on Pearl Street, it was to get the vendors in a straight line so that we could control traffic flow, and we were considering a reduced number of vendors. We could be open to a new location, but when we considered losing Pearl Street last year, new locations were hard to find. We are open to whatever you, you, you feel is necessary, but we have farmers talking to us every day saying, do we need to compost our plantings or do we go ahead? So this is really important, it really needs to be, I, I understand, we don't know where we're going to be a week, two weeks from now, but we have farmers talking to us saying, you know, we need to make a decision very, very soon.
Okay. And, and Joan, Tara has her hand up.
Okay.
Hi, Tara, please don't write my name in Zoom, if you have it there, please make it T instead. Relative to the vendors, I know a vendor that has said that one of the reasons they like Pearl Street is the shade. And so I remember when we, I can't remember when it was, but I think I was Selectman at the time, and they couldn't, we couldn't commit to exactly what space or how it was going to work, but we gave the farmer's market a guarantee that we would have some space for them and that we would work it out, and I think that's what Kenneth's looking for. Anyway, thanks.
Okay, any, anyone else?
That's it, no, that's all, Joan.
Okay, so we'll ask the Board of Health about this issue?
And, and maybe work with the, the farmer's market team to come up with a plan either at that space or another space?
Right.
I, I think, yes, we certainly, you're scheduled to meet a week from tonight, and the Board of Health is meeting tomorrow and maybe even another time before then, so we can get feedback from them. I think, as one of the previous callers mentioned, I think there is a concern of whether the town will allow them to have a farmer, farmer's market at all this year. I guess we can wait until next week, or you can wait until next week to, to clarify that.
Okay. Next item. I tried and it's still charging.
Yeah, just the, just the consent items.
So a motion that we approve, well, you have to read the items, I guess, it would be, do you want me to read them for you? Okay, I, I, item, consent items, item eight, approve meeting minutes, April 14, 2020. Consent item nine, approve executive sessions, April 3 and 14, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor? Clerk, call the roll?
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Trotter?
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the board?
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Trotter?
Aye, unanimous.
Hooray, thank you all very much.
Before we leave, are we meeting next Tuesday too? Is that what we're doing every week?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Great, bye.